Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Gesse. Absent.
Absent.
Latander.
Here.
Levec.
Here.
Matola.
Here.
Yavis Mate- Mathias. O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Tedford.
Here.
Wendis. Absent. Your honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there... So we have a public hearing at 7:35, so I'm going to start Citizens Forum, but I will have to stop at 7:35. Is there anybody here for Citizens Forum? Come on up, Janaro. Name and address.
My name's Janaro Gonzalez. I reside on West Main Street, 137. I usually come and complain. But today is different. My daughter's been going to school for about, I'll say, three weeks now, and she's taught me a lot about the school system here. Teachers are good, very smart, intelligent, great. But the problem that I see, I see that security misses a lot of weapons. We're not just talking box cutters or knives. We're talking weapons. Um, I even showed the two secretaries at the Rockville High School how I got into the group chat for the whole high school. We gotta, as parents that live out here, we have to talk to our children and see what they are really in, because the only thing that I see right now is putting up metal detectors for the Rockville High School. Me personally, being on West Main Street and seeing what been happening for the past week, week and a half, there's a lot of kids out there that are looking for trouble, and they go to that school. They really are. And I mean, I care because I live there and I see those kids run around, you know? I don't care what nationality you are, where you come from, that don't got nothing to do with me. I don't look at color, okay? At all. But I am asking for the town to look into it with the children, you know, and for security to be a little bit more precise with the children being in the basket, in the bathroom, and vaping and stuff like that. Um, it's not their fault. They can't keep contact with everybody. There's a lot of children, okay? Also, West Main Street had three car accidents in the last year that happened right in front of my house, okay? I know I complain about it, but something has to be done for at least West Main Street, some stop sign or a speed bump or something, just to slow the traffic down just a little, because they're really going real fast. I have a lot of footage. I do complain to the police department constantly about it, but you know, you only could do about so much, you know? And I know that the funds got to come from somewhere else, okay? And also, I was wondering if my mayor, right, or through the mayor, they say, right, if is it possible to get an activity center that could probably do some type of like chess or maybe like backgammon or some type of sport for the kids in the street that I could probably introduce to, that probably would keep out of the trouble, probably stay out the way? I don't really have much other else but that. I'm really just in concern with the kids out here right now, because it's getting warm and I see a lot, and I know a lot of y'all don't see what I see, because I have a lot more out there than within which are in y'all walls. I appreciate y'all for listening to me and, um, y'all have a great night tonight. Got to go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Members have a great night.
All right, so we're gonna, we'll continue the Citizens Forum after the public hearing, because we're not going to have enough time to do another one. All right. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order. Can the town clerk please read the legal notice?
This was posted on the outside bulletin board and on the town website on March 8, 2022. It was advertised in the Journal Inquirer on March 23, 2022, and March 28, 2022. Legal notice, Town of Vernon, Public Hearing, Town Council. This is to give notice that its regular meeting of March 1, 2022, the Vernon Town Council scheduled a public hearing to be held on April 5, 2022, in the third floor council chambers of the town hall, Memorial Building, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut. The public hearing will take place at 7:35 PM regarding a public hearing relative to the sale of the town-owned property known as 36 Cubles Drive, parcel ID 52 hyphen 142Q hyphen 0005, Vernon, Connecticut. Said public hearing to be held on Tuesday, April 5, 2022, at 7:35 PM in the Town Council Chambers, Third Floor, Town Hall, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, to hear comment and answer questions relative to the proposed sale. Karen C. Daigle, CCTC, Vernon Town Clerk, dated at Vernon, Connecticut, this 8th day of March, 2022.
Thank you. So this is, this concerns the sale of 36 Cubles Drive, which is a parcel of land that the Town of Vernon owns, and it is a noncon... If you look at the actual record of it, you'd see that it was valued much higher at one point, but it wasn't taken into account that it's a non-conforming lot. Essentially, you couldn't build on it. So the value of that property is considerably less. Uh, I know we've owned it for forever. Um, there used to be a summer cottage on the property, which I did not realize. All right. So the appraisal basically, or the value currently stands at, uh... Sorry about that. I thought I had it written down there. Somebody have the card pulled up?
Yeah.
What's the value on that?
14,800.
4,400?
$4,400. Okay. Questions? And this is open up to the public as well. Any... What's that? And Lou's here, too, if anybody has any questions for Lou. All right. Any questions about, um, the sale of 36 Cubles Drive from the public? Come on up. You can state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Paul Sink. I live at 39 Lewood Drive on the Middle Bolton Lake. Um, I have a couple of questions. One is the draft waters... Bolton Lake's watershed plan on pages, oh, 78 and 95. In both places, it encourages the town to retain ownership of undeveloped property, uh, to mitigate runoff if it's developed and that sort of thing. So I'd like to know if the town council took that into consideration in this deliberation. The second question I had was, I noticed in the motion that's going to be considered as part of the business, uh, portion of this, this hearing, that it's to authorize the mayor to negotiate a sale, and I was wondering, why is it going to be a negotiated sale as opposed to a public bid?
It's going to be a public bid.
Is it?
It is.
Okay.
So it'll go out to bid. And I think the only people that can actually build on that land is if one of the neighbors, um, combined it with their own property. So it's one of the adjoining neighbors. So it's, it's a non-conforming lot, which means you cannot build on it.
Right.
Which means even if somebody purchased it as an open lot, they could never build on that lot.
Right.
So...
So it is... I was just wondering, since the watershed plan encourages public ownership of undeveloped properties, I'd like to know if the council is going to take that into consideration.
We usually take everything into consideration. Um, but, uh, you know, we have a, probably over the next year, we'll be selling off other lands that we own, and these are small lands. These are not, uh, open space lands. Uh, and, and part of the consideration is the fact that you can't build something just on that small parcel.
Mm-hmm.
And that's important when we consideration, consider the runoff. Uh, the reason that this one started is I believe there is a neighbor that's interested in that piece of property, um, to combine with their own property.
Do you know if they have any building plans?
I have no idea what the interest is for.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Wait, Town Council, anybody have any questions?
Some in the background.
Oh, come on up. If you could just give your name and address.
Sure. Janine Gellino, 28 Anchorage, Vernon. Um, there is a trench there now that goes the whole length of that property, so if somebody were to buy it, does that trench need to stay there, uh, and right where it is, or can it move closer to the road? Or does it, can it be gone if they own the property? Do you know anything about that?
I don't know what the trench is there. We had all their department heads go up there and look at the property to make sure that it didn't interfere with anything that we would control, um, and I, I don't think they say anything about a trench.
Okay.
But I will have, uh, somebody from our building department go up there and take a look at that trench.
Okay. I have a picture of it if you needed it, but...
Okay.
I was just questioning with that. All right. So, um, you can't build on it unless, that is one of the questions I had, so nobody can build on it unless they are attached to it from one side or the other.
Attached to it, right.
You can't be, um, a street apart, like, um, if Cubles goes through it. My property's on the other side of Cubles.
No. It has to be attached.
Because I, I own, um, the 28 Anchorage, which is like a triangle, and there's roads all around me, and I actually own property on the other side of one of those roads, because originally, um, the sewage had to go that direction, so it's actually attached to my property.
Okay.
So even though there is a road through it, I do own the other parcel, so I was just questioning that. Okay.
No, in order to build anything on there, it would have to be attached to one of, I think there's only two properties that touch it.
Yes.
So it would have to be one of those two owners. So if you owned another piece even down the road, it, you can't combine the two.
Yeah. I do, I own one of the, on the same side of the road, I do own a property there, but then there is a party in between me and this property.
Right.
So, um, I don't, I don't directly attach. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right. Anybody from the council have any questions? No? Okay. All right. Uh, we're going to adjourn the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting, and we're going to go back to Citizens Forum. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at Citizens Forum? Thank you, Lou. No? Okay. Let's move on. We're going to hold executive session to the end so that we can have everybody finish up business. I got a couple of things during the presentation. Uh, I think we announced this during the budget hearing, but I'm pleased to announce that the Town of Vernon has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for the Town of Vernon's annual comprehensive financial report covering the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. This is the 30th consecutive year that we have been awarded this prestigious honor, and the recognition, this, this recognition is the testimony to Vernon's commitment to responsible and transparent financial planning. I'd like to thank Frank Zickus, Controller, for his exceptional work in preparing and presenting the report each year. We also want to thank and congratulate the entire finance department for their hard work under the leadership of Jeff O'Neill, our finance officer and treasurer. Congratulations to them. Rockville students win national writing awards. Students in Victoria Nordland's creative writing classes have received numerous prestigious awards and honors for many years. This year's no exception, with the RHS writers earning 70 awards at the Connecticut Student Writers Awards, more than 40 awards at the Connecticut Scholastic Writing Awards, and two students have won national acclaim, Dakota Olet and Kalen Mayer, each earned two 2020, 2022 Scholastic Art and Writing National Medals, and will be honored with their, with other award winners at a ceremony at Carnegie Hall on June 9. Congratulations to all the winners. Last night, the town council completed their budget deliberations and voted forward the budget to our, on, onto the annual town meeting on April 26 at 7:00 PM at Rockville High School Auditorium. I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work and patience as we work through our budget this year. In particular, I'd like to recognize Superintendent Joseph McCary and Board Chair Ann Fisher, Finance Director Jeff O'Neill, the finance department staff, as well as all the department heads, administrator, town administrator Carl, and our entire administrat... administrative staff for a job well done. I'm especially proud of the fact that this budget balances the needs of the residents with the taxpayers' ability to pay. I'd also personally like to thank the town council, because you guys did just as much hard work on this budget. It was a tough, it was a tough budget, and we cut as much as we could, we, and I think we balanced it very well. Okay? The Vernon Voice will arrive in Vernon homes later this month. The issue contains a variety of information about upcoming events, summer camps, and other interesting things happening in Vernon. Before you leave this evening, there are two documents, the POCD, Plan of Conservation and Development, developed by the Planning Department and the Planning and Zoning, and the Planning and Zoning Department, and the Senior Center Newsletter, prepared monthly by the Senior Center staff and distributed both in hard copy and electronically to the members. Um, you know, I think there's, is there just two of us that can't join? John, I, I don't think you can join yet either, right? Got to be 55?
Not yet.
All right. There's a couple of us short.
Remember, you're outnumbered, though.
I know. I don't think any of the ladies can join either.
Worse.
Are you a member?
Terri, Anna.
I'm, I'm just talking, there's a couple of us that, when we look at this, we got to be jealous that we can't join.
I'm a, I'm a...
Anybody that's not a member of the Senior Center, and, and you are 55 and above, you know, there's a lot of really good things happening there, and you should join. All right. Reminders. The Easter egg hunt is Thursday, April 14, 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM at Henry Park. The Dog Park Meeting is Thursday, April 21, 6:00 PM at Dog Park. Vernon-Rockville Little League Opening Day is Saturday, April 23, 10:00 AM. This year, the event is planned for Legion Field. The Fishing Derby is Saturday, April 30, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Valley Falls Park. The Mother's Day Dash, Get Your Running Shoes Out, Sunday, May 8, 9:00 AM, starting at Henry Park. The Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May 30, Step Off From Northeast School at 10:00 AM. We invite all veterans to participate in the parade. If you're a veteran or know a veteran, please pass the invitation along. And that is it for announcements. All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Brian.
Mr. Mayor, motion to, uh, move the consent agenda as written.
Seconded, who seconded that?
Jim.
Jim, seconded by Jim? All right. Are we pulling any of them?
No?
No? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Are you in favor or opposed?
I was in favor.
All right. Unanimous on the consent agenda. All right. Let's move on to new business number one. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the Vernon Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2 dash 26 and 2 dash 27, the Vernon Town Council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to dispose of the parcel known as 36 Cubles Drive, Vernon, Connecticut, by negotiated sale.
Can we, can we, can we just make a motion to, or do we have to make a motion, or can we just change this right on the spot to sealed bid instead of negotiated?
All right.
Can you, what, do we have to make a motion to change it, or he can just do it in the original motion?
He can do it in the original. Correct. Just say it.
All right. So just, just, just change it to sealed bid.
Want me to read it again?
Yes, if you could.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the Vernon Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2 dash 26 and 2 dash 27, the Vernon Town Council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to dispose of the parcel known as 36 Cubles Drive, Vernon, Connecticut, by sealed bid.
Seconded, seconded by John. Questions? What I want, I do want to say, I, I'm interested about this trench, so I'm going to have the building department go up there and look, and, uh, if there's any type of issue with it, uh, or that it needs to stay or anything like that, that'll be, um, put in as, uh, something along with the sale of the, the property. All right. It'll be kept in there. All right. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. New business number two.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby gratefully accepts the donation of $2,150 from an anonymous donor to the Vernon Cemetery Department for the purpose of establishing and maintaining a GIS cemetery mapping software.
I think I got Laura first. And it was one of you two. I think my ears on this side aren't working as great. Seconded by, uh, seconded by Laura. Um, you know, this is pretty much what it says, uh, you know, it basically took the paper cards and, and putting it out there and, uh, they mapped it with GIS. It's a, it's a great donation, and, uh, I want to, I don't know who it was, but I'd really like to thank them, and I'm sure you guys would, too. All right. Questions? Can, you want, you ask, you want to add something?
Do you want to ask questions to me about it, or?
Yeah. Come on up.
All right. Come on up.
We hate to have you waste a trip.
If, if you want to volunteer, because you were this close to being done, but go ahead.
Well, I came this way, so.
Rookie, rookie.
I'm excited about it.
Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Travis.
Hi.
Um, just want to say that this, this is a great thing, and it's really bringing, um, so much more accessibility and vision to, to our cemetery department. I mean, some of the, some of the graves there go back so far in some of our cemeteries, and the historical value of those are wonderful. And I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've been doing and, um, you know, getting everything up to date and all that, so thank you for your hard work.
Great. Thank you very much.
Julie.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Travis. Thank you for joining us. I'm sorry?
Hold your mic a little closer.
I sit closer. I keep it here. I'm sorry. Um, just a question on the digitally mapping it. How long do you perceive that's going to take to do?
Sure. So through you, sir. Um, so the company needs about a month and a half to create the platform, so it's, it's already the current platform that we're using, and they're essentially just going to put another layer on top of that, and that layer is going to be our cemeteries. So after that's complete, I hope to be able to get all the information there within three to six months.
Wonderful.
Um, I mean, ideally, we have a lot of the infrastructure already, um, and the company's going to take what we have and migrate it over. Um, so assuming that goes smoothly, there shouldn't be too much legwork on our end.
And do you don't perceive any big problems or issues with that?
No. This is something that's commonly done in the industry, although I will say, um, there are no municipal cemeteries in our area doing this. Um, so we are pushing the bar here, and, um, I'm, I'm proud of that.
Wonderful. And it'll be on your, your website or for the public to see?
Yeah. So, I mean, we can kind of put it wherever we think is best, but it'll certainly be on our webpage, um, to find information.
Well, thank you for all your hard work, and thanks for coming. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Terry, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, through you. Um, I'd just like to piggyback off of Laura. Travis, you know, I love the cemetery, and I think you do an amazing job, and like I had told you yesterday, when my eye doctor knows of the cemetery and their kids love it and think the chapel is Paw Patrol, is, it was like really nice to hear that, you know, the cemetery is, um, a great place for people to go take walks and, and enjoy the quietness of the cemetery, so thank you for an amazing job that you do at the cemetery.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Brian.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Clark. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. When, um, this comes up on the website, will we be able to do like a search? You know, I'm associated with the Sunday Union Veterans, so search like all Civil War veterans, all World War II veterans. Will that kind of come up?
Yeah. So through you, sir. The way that it'll be set up is you'll be able to search by last name. Um, I'm not sure it's going to be done by category. It's something what we can look into, it would just be another field to add. Um, my database is not set up that way. The way our database is set up is I can see all veterans, but it's not specific to what, um, war they were in.
Okay. We have a, we have a list of Civil War veterans...
Okay.
...buried there, so we flag them, so just, if you ever want to, just let us know and we can...
Okay, great.
Get that over to you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much for doing this. Great idea, though. Love it, Ms. [inaudible].
Thanks.
Anybody else? Travis, you're doing a great job. We like to see these, uh, these new things, new and exciting things.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the support from everyone.
So, thank you. And again, I want to publicly thank whoever the donor was.
Yes. Yeah. I will, I will let them know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor? Almost raised my hand. Unanimous. You know, when you get those really good donations, you gotta... All right. Let's move on to new business number three.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the disposal of assets for the Vernon Public Schools as disclosed on the request for disposal of fixed assets form.
Seconded by John. All right. Um, you know, if, the school's doing a great job of keeping up on this, so, um, I'm really happy that, uh, these keep coming to us, and again, you know, anything we can auction off, we do, and hopefully, uh, we can get some money for this stuff. Any questions? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian? Number four.
Mr. Mayor, resolve, the Town Council hereby authorizes Finance Officer and Treasurer Jeffrey A. O'Neill to elect the standard allowance of up to $10 million to spend on government services through the life of the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Plan Act of 2021, open paren, SLFRF, close paren, program.
Seconded by Mary Ann. So essentially, what this does is, this has been adopted, has to be adopted, it, it actually provides more flexibility on our, on our federal monies, um, and I think something that, the reason that this was brought about is obviously, we have taken our time with our expenditures, uh, some towns have, have, cities have spent, and I think this, uh, the flexibility is more for those that have already spent than us, but it, it does provide that flexibility. And again, we will be, uh, providing a list of the, the 48 people that responded to our online survey, and as a council, we will be determining, uh, uh, which projects to move forward with under the federal funding. Any questions? Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ann. Um, just one question on the cover sheet. It says, um, the Town of Vernon's required to submit an annual project and expenditure report. No quarterly reports, just one annual of anything, any, um, any way that we're expending the money?
Yes. Through the mayor, it is, it's an annual basis. We're what's considered a non-entitlement unit, so it's a locality with under 50,000 Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ann. Just one question. On the cover sheet, it says the town of Vernon is required to submit an annual project and expenditure report. No quarterly reports, just one annual of anything, any way that we're expending the money?
Yes, through the mayor. It's an annual basis. We're what's considered a non-entitlement unit. So, it's a locality with under 50,000 people, and our funds were delivered to us through the state. So, that gives us an annual reporting requirement versus a quarterly reporting requirement.
Okay. And then, Jeff, in the second part there, electing the standard allowance, this is the only time this option will be available. What does that mean?
Through the mayor, exactly that. So, this is our first reporting period. This is our only chance to elect the standard allowance. If we do not get the approval to do so at this meeting for that deadline, we will then have to follow the original rules and the restrictions of the money.
So, the standard allowance is this proposed motion?
Through the mayor. So, the proposed motion is to allow me to elect the standard allowance in the reporting portal.
Okay.
Standard allowance, sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff.
Did you have a question, Ann?
Yes, I have a few questions. So, I have read the overview of the final rule, this document, Jeff. The reporting is pretty complicated. I don't know if you've looked into that. I think you're going to have to hire a new person, you know, a new person just to understand the rules for reporting in this. So, I just want to understand how the intent of the motion. So, you can choose, is that what you said, anytime as you go through here, what you care to include as part of government services? And as I understand, the government services are anything you're doing now. So, you could choose an activity that... Or put into the program an activity that you're currently doing. Through you, Your Honor, Jeff.
So, through the mayor. Again, the motion tonight is to allow me to elect that one-time revenue loss. Going forward, any use of those funds will have to be approved by town council. So, yes, it does open up to government services, which is a much broader allowance of uses for those funds. But again, you as the council will be approving what that money is spent on. As far as the reporting, yes, the reporting portal just opened this week. I did log into it today after the budget. And yeah, we have our work cut out for us. But the reason this came about is because many municipalities did make a, not a complaint, but a recommendation to Treasury over the last year that these rules are onerous. And that's where they came out with the final rule that went into effect April 1st, allowing for this one-time revenue loss opportunity.
So, as I understand it, you have... We've already received 4.4 million, is that right, of the 8.8 million? And have you established a separate fund for that, a reserve for that?
Yes, through the mayor. That is invested in a separate account, yes.
And from what I understand, the town can continue to accrue interest on that fund, and it's ours? So, it seems to me the longer we delay any action on this, assuming that the rates go in the right direction, the better?
That's correct. And the interest through the mayor.
Is that a strategy you're kind of thinking about?
Yeah. Again, that's what we did when we received the money. We put it into the short-term investment account. So, that revenue... And the original thought was that that interest would have to be kept in that account and used for the same purposes. It's since been clarified that the interest can be used for general government services as well. My recommendation is we'd use the money and the funds and the interest earned for any programs related to this, though.
Right.
Yes, I think you have to, by the way. They defined it.
I understand. That's interest from...
Only on that piece?
Yeah, we're not investing this money anywhere. It's the interest earned while it's in the account.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not putting this in stocks or anything.
You can't put it in it? Oh, okay. So, it's just plain old bank interest?
No, we're not allowed to do that.
Oh, that's not... Okay.
Next thing you know, we'd lose it, you know, and we're not doing that.
All right.
I told you Bitcoin was a bad idea.
No, we're limited as to where our finances can go, yeah.
They described it as investment, and to me, it meant something a little broader that you could do with it.
I hope nobody does that.
Wes Caven?
They have their own issues down there.
Thank you. Just seeing to my question.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Brian?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I always talk later.
Well, thank you. Your Honor, I would like to move to make an amendment to this motion. I move to amend the motion by adding language that authorizes the mayor to appoint a subcommittee of town council members to explore options for the use of the SLFRF funds. The committee, the subcommittee shall be comprised of five to seven members of the town council with a balanced party representation and shall include the Director of Administration. The focus of the subcommittee shall be to evaluate community needs, establish funding priorities, and prepare a plan for presentation to the town council for the use of said funds.
That's outside of what we're doing tonight. This is basically, we're doing one thing tonight. I mean, you made the motion, so if somebody wants to second it, we'll go forward, but it's still outside what we're doing here.
A second?
Okay. All right, so we're on the... A motion to commit to a subcommittee.
Yes, Your Honor, speak to...
Go ahead.
I think I've spoken on this many times since probably last year. We hit that mark, the 10% or whatever revenue loss, I believe, and qualify for pretty much a lot of money that can be used through town on many projects that would benefit our taxpayers and citizens, our children. We did take a couple of steps that benefited mental health. We may need to expand on that as well. But I think it's a good idea to have a committee of our town council members, all of us, looking at different projects, weighing which ones make sense. I realize I had read a lot of the literature on it. If you go to pick a certain profit, you know, project, you want to make sure that you can sustain that project over the life and that you're not causing a problem for your citizens for later in either fees or taxes or... So, myself, I would think a group of the town council members would be a good idea, and I highly support that. Thank you.
Julie.
Maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but I thought the motion was just to accept that we're just pulling this option for Jeff to do the one-time standard allowance. I thought that's solely what it was regarding...
Right, that's what the motion is. This is trying to add in some subcommittee. So, I think it's a little outside.
I was going to say, because it says in taking the action, there's no change in the requirement that the town council must approve all uses of funds provided under this act, but we're solely just accepting, allowing Jeff to do this one-time option for the money. So, I don't agree with that, to add that right now. Not that it shouldn't be added maybe somewhere else, but not under this motion.
John?
Well, I think that's a fair point, Mr. Mayor. I was going to speak to the substance of the motion itself, but I'd be curious to have a ruling as to whether this motion is properly before us, if it has to be germane to the issue at hand, and if it's even under Robert's Rules of Order allowable under what we have here before us in tonight's agenda. So, before I speak to the substance, I guess I'd like to ask that question.
All right. Well, we... Town Clerk?
She's not a part of the committee.
She's not. So, where do... I don't know. Diane and Karen are.
Going to get shot down anyway.
Here comes Diane.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. We'll take a five-minute, and we'll come back. Let's let these guys think about it. All right, five-minute recess.
Diane, have a...
All right. The ruling is, is that, you know, we're not amending the proposed motion. They're actually changing the motion, because this motion is about how, you know, the Finance Officer and Treasurer Jeffrey O'Neil is going to elect the standard allowance of up to $10 million to spend on government services through the life of the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Plan Act of 2021 program. This does not talk about how the money will be allocated by the town through the town council or any subcommittees or anything like that. So, I believe it's... It is out of order, but because I feel that, you know, there's a disagreement on that, I move that we vote on the amendment within the amendment. That's where I'm going to stand on it. So, we will take a vote on this, on the amendment within the amendment. Are there any more comments on the... Go ahead, John.
I'll speak to it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Through you, this is a body of 12 people. It's all elected by the same voters within the town of Vernon. We're elected by the entirety of the town of Vernon. We all take the exact same oath of office, and we all have the same duty to the voters that elected us, and the voters and the citizens and the taxpayers of this town. We have a fiduciary duty to them, and we have a duty to give them our judgment and our wisdom and make decisions. And we all have that exact same equal duty to the citizens of Vernon. This is a big decision to make, to allocate this money that's been given to us, and I think it's a duty that we all share, and it's a duty that we all share equally, and it's a duty that we should all exercise equally. And it shouldn't be divided into subcommittees where some of us are going to decide and some of us are going to stand by and watch. It's something for all of us to decide, and I would vote against this amendment and urge my colleagues to do the same so that we may all exercise the same duty we were elected to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other... Ann?
Yes. The intent is that there's a group of us that digs deeper into the needs of the community and establishes priorities. Everybody would certainly still have a vote on the issue. When you read the literature, there's an emphasis on transparency, community involvement, and public discussion, public forum, and also transparency in reporting. Many of the towns have already put on their website a dashboard that lists the projects that are involved that indicate the expenditures to date on them. So, I just... And I... We've talked about some of this before, so I'm just pushing. I think all of us would want the same thing, but I think that this... We're not going to be getting into the weeds. All of us, 12 people, are not going to... Don't have time to get into the weeds. That's why I think assigning it to a subcommittee of five people who are willing to do that, that are willing to involve the community, that are willing to put the time into understanding what the needs are of the community, I think makes sense. So, I would disagree with... So I would disagree with, you know, how, having it be, how, you, you need to meet, you need to talk, you need to plan, you, you need to be part of the planning process. All of that takes time. So I, I just think it, it would help and it would be more responsive to the community if we did have a, some other towns call it a task force, let's call it a subcommittee. I don't, I don't know what we call it, but it's commonly, it's not an unusual thing. It's, um, to have a committee that works specifically on it, um, as, in other towns do, as other towns do. Thank you.
Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my feeling on this is that I agree with John that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. Um, and we are not managing the business at hand we have to take care of first. I think once we get this done, we can plan together how, as a council, how we go about taking care of our community using this money. I don't think that we're not going to have a committee per se. I just think that this is not our topic of discussion right now with this motion. I think that we need to make sure we're doing this in a correct manner and then we move on to the planning phase. We don't want to jump into having a committee and defining it and everything when we're not ready for that yet. We will do things like that. Let's get our business that we're here to do done before we go on and do other things. Thank you.
I just would like to add, and thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I appreciate your, um, willingness to have a conversation and, you know, shed light. I do understand that my, uh, you know, interpretation of the material presented in front of me, um, does lead one to assume that this was something, um, that we were servicing these funds. Um, so with that, I did have a, a belief that this would make sense, that at this time we acknowledge that although we don't have a plan established, before you can make a plan, you would need a committee and you need a guiding principle of said committee. And I understand that we, you know, continue to say these things will be presented to, you know, the town council for us to, uh, all vote on. Uh, the language that I specifically included, um, was that of which a plan would be presented to the town for the town to provide guidance, input, ask questions and give feedback. In no, um, in no way is it intending to cut anyone out of the conversation. It's really intended to be a inclusive, um, space for individuals who would like to be involved to dig deeper as these conversations tend to take a lot longer than the, uh, I believe we have a hard stop unless we vote until 10. Um, so with that, I think that this is such an important opportunity. I know Mr. O'Neal had said it's going to take a lot of work to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and I think that having a committee focused on due diligence would only be of benefit to our community and I would sincerely appreciate if, uh, we gave that some more consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? Again, I'm going to entertain the vote. I still think this is out of order, but I'm going to allow the vote. So all those in favor of, uh, forming a subcommittee to decide how the monies are spent or the wording that you gave, uh, raise your hand. All those against? Six to four. The, the motion failed. Back onto the main part of the motion. Any more questions about the main portion of the motion? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. O'Neal. So in this motion is, um, giving you the authority to say the town of Vernon is selecting option A or option B, right? There's only two options?
Through the mayor, so it is allowing us to take the one-time revenue loss, yes.
Which, um, we have to, we have to declare that we're taking this option. Other municipalities did not declare this first or this didn't exist when we, when this first came out?
Through the mayor, this is the first reporting that the non-entitlement units have, first reporting deadline of April 30th, 2022.
So other municipalities, like how did, I think of West Haven, how did they get in trouble if, because we are not, we're not.
Let's, let's, let's keep, let's keep them out of it.
I think just, just to get a little back, just a background through the mayor. So when the original rule came out, or when the original allocation of these unprecedented funds came out, what it said was there was a revenue loss formula. It, it basically said 4.1% revenue growth. When you looked at the actual formula, it's worse than the actuarial formulas that were out there. Nobody could figure it out and that's what created a lot of the confusion, a lot of the concern and a lot of the complaints to, to the treasury. So anybody that did before, some of the bigger cities, they are doing their reporting on a quarterly basis, but for us smaller municipalities, we only have to do it on an annual basis. So the treasury took the time, they had their interim rule, they came out with the final rule. I don't know where they came up with the $10 million, but they said that was the threshold that made sense for the majority of respondents.
Okay, so that's why the 10 million differs from our 8.3 million, because this is just standard.
That's correct, the mayor. The $10 million is a standard allowance. It had nothing to do with looking at Vernon and 8.3 million.
Yeah. So this is something like those things we approve every so often that says, you know, um, we don't discriminate, we're equal hiring, those kinds of things. We have to declare a statement, so we're just declaring a statement?
Uh, it's not a statement. It is the town council is taking the action of, of that allowance. And again, it opens you up to more broad-based usage of the funds.
Okay. Oh, I see. And if we didn't, we'd have a, a contracted usage of the funds?
The mayor, we'd, we'd fall back to the original four buckets and you'd have to fit everything into that.
All right, good. So then, um, when I was looking at this, uh, in the section here and I was trying to summarize it, we can't offset tax cuts, right?
That is correct.
Yep. So there's nothing gained there. Uh, we can't, how interesting, yesterday you talked to us about pensions. So we can't take any of this and contribute to any of the pensions in town?
Through the mayor again, that was, that was, that did not change from the interim to the final. These were all the restrictions that were in the initial rule as well.
Okay. And then one of my favorite things, we can't, uh, pay off or reduce any debt?
Correct.
Yeah. All right. And then, um, wow. And we can't pay off a legal settlement, although I don't think we have any. But if we were being sued, we can't use this money to pay that off either.
Correct, through the mayor, we cannot.
Okay. So we pretty much have some interesting guidelines here. So all that, so this is what you're, this thing, this motion we have is telling us we're going to abide by these guidelines that you, that were in the package.
Through the mayor, absolutely, yes.
All right, that clears up a lot. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Welcome. All right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. All right. Raise your hand up or no? Okay. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine yeses, opposed, abstention, one abstention. Ariana abstained. Okay. Number five, Brian. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne, or his designee, to apply for and receive funding through Connecticut Early Childhood Funder Collaborative on behalf of the Vernon Youth Services Bureau and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne, or his designee, to sign any and all documents relative to the same.
Seconded by Laura. All right. Uh, Michelle is here. You want to give us a little brief on what this is? Use the mic.
There we go. Hello, everybody. Um, so this is an extension grant, um, used, the funds are to use to build up the capacity of our Vernon School Readiness Council. Um, we applied for this funding for the period of last July through December. Um, we've had a little carryover money and they've opened up an opportunity for us to apply for additional funds, um, up to $22,800. Um, so we've been able to hire a coordinator, an assistant coordinator, and we've developed, um, a parent, a strong parent volunteer team. Um, one of, one of the goals of this initiative is to really uplift parent voice, um, in our community and the development of our early childhood systems. And so we've been able to accomplish that. Um, we've also, um, updated all of the content on our, our website. We're working on the design now and we've also developed some surveys with, with, um, parent input. Um, so we'd like to continue this initiative. We, um, one of the goals we have is to have an actual parent-led community event, um, in the, in the near future.
Thank you. All right, questions? Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm one of the members of the youth services committee and, uh, I just want to continue to say that, um, Michelle can get money out of, or not money, but water out of a rock because she is the grant specialist. Um, what I'd like to see is she knows what the needs are of our, the youth in our community for using these funds effectively and that's why I absolutely will vote yes to get this grant. Um, thank you very much for all your hard work for the youth and the families in our community and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Hill. Good to see you.
Hello.
How are the tires on your, no, that's, that's the right, nevermind. Um, any, so I've, I read this and any matching town funds we're going to have to come up with?
Through the mayor, no. There are no matching funds required.
Okay. Um, you defined what we're going to use it specifically. And how, so how specific does this, how does this grant specifically benefit Vernon citizens?
Through the mayor, so we know that parents are the most influential teachers and people in their children's lives. So by really uplifting, giving parents, um, opportunities to provide input, it's really engaging our parents in the development of what we need in our community for, for young children.
How many parents do you expect to reach?
So our parent volunteer team now, we have four really engaged parents. We have two parent ambassadors and they'll be, you know, throughout this period of time recruiting more parents and, um, and just getting input from parents through the surveys and, and through their own circles of parents, um, looking to get information from them.
Okay. Are we going to work through y- youth services, of course, but like, are you going to work through like the PTOs to get to the parents?
So through the mayor.
The PTAs, whatever they're called?
Yep. This is, um, definitely, we have strong partnership with the family school, community partnership and all of the schools and, and also all of our community, um, partners on our Vernon School Readiness Council as well.
Which is quite, quite a big yes.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much and I'd like to second what Laura says. You're like the grant queen here, so.
Thank you.
Good job, young lady.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Brian, number six?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby schedules a public hearing to hear comment and answer questions relative to the 2022 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Application with the Vernon Housing Authority. Said public hearing will be held on April 19th, 2022 at 7:35 PM in the Town Council Chambers 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut.
Seconded by Laura. All right. This is for the, the grant to, that, uh, we're going to be working with Vernon Housing Authority on, uh, for rehabbing, um, 55 Grove Street. Any questions? All right?
Of course, Mr. Mayor, I have questions. Uh, through you, I think, to Mr. Picaro. Will the housing authority have a representative here to explain their, uh, project to the public, including like diagrams and budget and stuff like that?
Through the mayor. Uh, that is a requirement. I will say that this has been a collaborative process thus far. Um, as you may notice, we have posted an RFP for professional and technical services to manage the portion of the grant that we will be, uh, working on. And as you may recall from a prior conversation and, uh, for informational purposes, uh, on this topic, we are focusing on the, the level one, uh, requirements, which in the grant are the most critical requirements, such as ADA Accessibility Americans with Disability Act renovations that would allow residents to have more accessibility to their residence. That includes, um, uh, parking, uh, smoke detectors, common spaces, elevated walks and possibly even roofing if there's funding left over. Um, so we've also made it explicitly clear that any procurement for the funds that we're managing have to meet our standards, um, for, for procurement, for bid, for bidding and so forth. Uh, and I will say at this point in time, uh, through meetings that the mayor and I have facilitated, um, with all the stakeholders, including our town attorney and the attorney that's representing the Vernon Housing Authority, it's been a very collaborative process and things are moving in a good direction on behalf of the residents, uh, at the Vernon Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Picaro. While I enjoy that you're always very thorough and, uh, complete in discussions, I would hope that we would, you know, I still want the housing authority here and their architects or whomever to explain this with us and give us the entire scope of their project. And, um, you, uh, we went a little easier on them last time and, um, I think I'd like more explanation this time, not to be a, I can't tell you what my eye calls me, not to be a pain in the butt, but, uh, you know, to, um, make sure that there, we are in collaboration with them, doing what's appropriate for the citizens who live in that, uh, that facility that they're renovating, whatever that is.
Through the mayor, we, I'm sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
And just keep in mind that this funding is only going to be a, a portion of the entire $5 million. So when they come, they're probably going to, most likely going to concentrate on our portion. They might give us more, but we're going to have to stick to the budget as well or stick to the, uh, what's on the agenda.
Okay. So I think I'd like to hear the whole thing because I want to make sure that our portion doesn't sideline that.
Right. The problem is, is you got to stick to whatever he is in the agenda and the agenda is this grant. That's what the public hearing is on. So hopefully they'll have paperwork that shows the entire thing, but we really have to concentrate on the monies that we're, that they're going to use on the projects we're funding.
So I have a question then for the public hearing, then, uh?
All right. All right. Any other questions? Mary Ann?
Uh, I kind of echo Brian's concerns, um, and I am hoping that we see a better transparency, some type of, uh, information the next time. So a public hearing is quite welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's a public hearing. Hopefully they're going to come with, uh, you know, especially if there's a lot of people in the audience, they're going to bring their, uh, A-game. All right. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, Brian, minutes?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the minutes is written.
Seconded.
Executed by Marianne.
Oh, actually, should I just read it?
Any corrections? You should probably just, you know, wanted to read it.
Let me read it. The town council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting on March 15th, 2022, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Marianne. Any corrections or deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Nope? No? 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 Nice try.
Too many meetings too close together, huh?
Executive session.
Mr. Mayor, the town council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut General Statutes 1-202, hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss personnel, invites Michael J. Picaro, Town Administrator, and Don Maslic, Assistant Town Administrator, to attend.
Seconded by Jim. All right. Uh, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Who seconded that? Arianna seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Let's go home.